Four years ago. Pretty recent.
Yeah, it is.
The United States of America. To the Republic of America. My nation. And this is the representative of the citizens of our home.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Pishanti.
Here.
Mr. Gardena.
Here.
Mr. Persil.
Here.
Mr. Malka.
Here.
Mr. Ritzel.
Present.
Mr. Artuso.
Here.
Mrs. Lawton. Mr. Taylor.
Here.
And we have two items on the table matter. One was a human being drive-through cafe. They've asked you to table again, so I don't know if there's anyone here for that. This application will not be heard tonight. Okay, short of that, anything else is scheduled? I'd like to make one change. The first one was Lochner. But we also have the... Oh, yeah, number three on the regular schedule, Splash Car Wash. Mike, why don't you read that? If you can hand... Nothing was all right to say. We'll hear that one first, just short and quick.
Splash Car Wash, one-year extension located at 1013 Ridge Road. At the Fox Five LLC is requesting a one-year extension. The final site plan approval for the public hearing associated with the construction of a 7,000 square foot car wash in a 2.16 acre parcel located in a medium intensity district commercial district under sections 26917 and 35018 as code of the town of Webster.
It's Riley.
Hi, my name is Ann Riley. I'm here representing the owner of the property. We came here, as you might remember, last year we came for an extension as well. We're still in litigation. I thought we were getting close. And then the attorney for Splash left. A new attorney is taking over, trying to get up to speed. So we need to get another extension. We don't want to lose our approvals. We're going to be coordinating the property now and sort this out with locations.
Okay, Ann, you are aware, actually, why this put in the code years ago was because of things changing. Since this was in, you've got a couple of new ones in the general area, car washes. I'm okay with giving it another year extension. I think that should be the last one after that because there's been significant changes in the car washes now. So if everybody's with that, would you give her another year extension? You can tell them, this is only fair. I mean, that was the main part of the car. That would make it, if they come in again, that'd be three extensions. That's a little expensive. Okay, so with that, so you want to make a motion for an extension? For Splash Car... I'll make a motion for the Splash Car Wash. The planning board extends this for 1013 Ridge Road. And it's Fox Five LLC requesting a one-year extension. You can grant that, a one-year. And this will be the last year for an extension. Is that your motion or second?
Okay, the first table matter tonight, Lochner subdivision located west of 1854 Lake Road. The Appletech McManville rule associates is requesting preliminary final site plan and subdivision approval along with a public hearing associated with the re-subdivision of a 21.8 acre parcel into two three-acre lots to be developed for the single-family residences. And one 15.8 acre lot to remain undeveloped, having... being located, rather, in an LL large lot, single-family residential district under sections 26911 and 29615 of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening, Hall of Roo, we're the Hall of Roo associates. We've finally got the car engineers to stipulate that the wetlands is not a jurisdictional wetland. So with that, we're moving forward with the plans. We think we've addressed all the comments, both the informal meeting that we had with the PRC and the formal comments that we've received. And so with that, we're... Jeanette and Tim are here to answer any questions you might have from the owners. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Why don't you just bring this back up a little bit? I think we may have one new person here since this application is in. You've got lot one, which is the large one, three and four. Then where was the entrance going to be for lot one that was going to the west side of the property, was it? Or the east side?
Yeah, lot one comes directly off the side of the drive. We're trying to avoid any more curb cuts, county access permits. And we're trying not to overwhelm the existing side of the drive there, too.
All right, so we're through the side. The issue was, you know, with drainage and stuff, wasn't it? Wasn't that the biggest thing in it?
Yes.
Drainage on the property, right?
Yeah, these are... It's... These are all reniv systems. So they're... They have to be 100 feet away from the cava non. So that really causes an issue, cava non or front setback, that sort of thing. So... And then drainage wasn't really that much of a problem because we've got some lower areas we can drainage through. So it was just the fact that we had the systems had to be 100 feet away from the cava non.
Anybody? I know Derek, you had a couple of questions the last time. I'm going to go with Derek to... Are you okay with this?
Yeah, my question is probably you were with the wetland and telling me that it's coming in as well.
You're in the zone. This is a public hearing, so if there is... I don't know if there's anyone here who wishes to speak in the court or against this project. Not seeing anyone, then we'll... Close the public hearing, goes back to the court. Nobody? Dave?
No.
You kind of went through a... You kind of went through a... And filed, so you want to make a motion for approval?
We need to make a motion for a certain subdivision approval.
Oh, yeah, sure. I'm sorry, yeah. Go ahead, you sit around. Yeah, we didn't do that, right?
And so motion for an almost action. The town of Webster planning board considered request for application. McManville Rule, the re-subdivision of a 21.8 acre parcel into two three-acre parcels and one 15.8 acre parcel. And the SBL number 037.03-1-36 located in an LL large lot, single-family residential district located west of 1854 Lake Road and provide access to 1854 Lake Road. And existing 4.35 acre parcel having SBL number 37.03-1-36. The planning board determined that the proposed action, almost an action pursuant to Part 617 that's taken armor of law review regulations. Planning board determined that the proposed action is subject to similar needs to review pursuant to Part 617.6 to the law of seeker and is the most appropriate agency for making a determination of significance. The planning board, therefore, designates itself lead agency for proposed actions. The planning board has given consideration of the criteria for determining significance as set forth in section 617.7C1 of seeker and has one, considered the information contained in the charter of environmental assessment form, part one dated October 17, 2023, and two, considered public comments directed by the planning board during public hearings on November 7, 2023, and September 30, 2024. And then number three, completed parts two and three of the environmental assessment form. Now therefore be resolved if the town of Webster planning board hereby determines that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the recent set forth of the catchment of determination on significance. Be further resolved if the town of Webster planning board is authorized to take all actions reasonable and necessary to file, then they do a declaration and discharge the town of Webster planning board responsibility of lead agency for this action. Be it further resolved if the town of Webster planning board based on the information analysis of the reference supported documentation and discussions of the action made by the town of Webster planning board as documented by the minutes for this meeting, that the proposed action will not resolve immediately without an impact. Be it further resolved if the town of Webster planning board, based on the determination about significance, be it further resolved if the town of Webster planning board based on above reasons issued, then they do a declaration as evidenced on the determination.
Okay, that be a motion, you decide.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dave, you want to go ahead and make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion for Lochner subdivision, a new site plan subdivision approval. Sub to the PRC families. Sub to subdivision for town has been approved. Non-provision should be constructed according to the specification of the town of Webster. Room reconstruction will be accordance with the specification and conditions set forth in the town of Webster. All site work is to be complied with the standards of the town of Webster. Comply with all requirements and be still following the town regulations. The dress range. Sniff storage. Approvals are subject to the county number. We have a K plan with 14,000 foot around. Page 11, sir.
So motion. That be a motion, you decide.
I'll second it.
Motion, second.
Mr. Malka.
Aye.
Mr. Persil.
Aye.
Mrs. Lawton.
Aye.
Mr. Ritzel.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Gardena.
Aye.
Mr. Pishanti.
Aye. Okay. Well, I'll make a motion for...
I'll make a motion for a final site plan subdivision approval. A new subdivision. Sub to the PRC families. Sub to approximately 100 feet of the code of that. Sub to boundary of building conditions. Sub to the home structure of the 1000 feet. Sub to the family for the works of builders. Significant constructions will occur within a year. As deemed by the thing board expire on September 3, 2023. Conditions of the owner and the final approval are to pick this on the current page of the final sign claims. I don't even need to hear it. Certification on the engineer.
For this brother.
I'll put it in there. The engineer of course probably should have certification. And of course, work is required as to prove of an annulation of final approval. Before strictly like, so any competition, if to put...
I don't believe there's any utility installations that would be dedicated to the town, correct? So no. Just the subdivision land, right? So Dave, you want to make that for site plan again? Subdivision of land also? It's all in one resolution? All right? Okay. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, you decide.
Second.
Mr. Malka.
Aye.
Mr. Ritzel.
Aye.
Mrs. Lawton. Aye.
Mr. Persil.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Gardena.
Aye.
Mr. Pishanti.
Aye.
Thanks, Rick. Hey, Mr. Allseth, good luck there. Took you a little while to get there, huh?
Yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. And this is... Wait for a while. Go ahead.
First scheduled item on tonight's agenda, Webster Assembly of God sign located at 708 Hard Road. The applicant Jamie Catalano of Vital Signs is requesting sign approval associated with the construction of approximately 30 square foot monument sign on a 2.20 acre parcel located in an R3 single-family residential district under section 265.7 of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening, I'm here in James Place. Josh Palmer from Vital Signs, representing Webster Assembly of God at 708 Hard Road. Pretty cut and dry, we're just proposing a six-foot tall, a true aluminum monument sign with push-through curly internally lit letters. So the face of the sign is aluminum on both sides, it would be okay. Basically, only the letters light. And it would be kind of an edge lit effect with the translucent film on the base of it.
Is that pretty much the color you're using right there?
It's pretty much what you see right there. Two seconds.
Anybody have any questions or concerns? Sure, so we can do the street address down there. We share the street address down there. That's a good point, yep.
I can put one, maybe a vertical one, on the butt end facing the road, running downward. We can do some dimensional letters on that.
You can see it from both sides. They could be on both sides.
This would be facing the road.
Right, yeah, I think that's okay, no?
It's far enough back that you should be able to see it, but 25 feet.
I think that's fine, no?
Okay. Yep, we can add that in.
Yeah, good point, yeah, thank you. All right. Anybody have questions or concerns? All right, so you want a motion? Okay, you want to mention what? Oops, geez, I'm rushing faster.
The town of Webster planning board consider a close by applicant Jamie Catalano of Vital Signs that construct approximately 30 square foot monument sign on a 2.2 acre parcel having a SBL number 064.15-29 located at 708 Hard Road. The planning board classifies the proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617.2C2, stating environmental law of law review, review regulations, and therefore that's subject to review.
Any other motion, you decide. A second, Jeanette. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Want to make a motion for the pool, the center?
I'll make a motion for applicant Jamie Catalano of Vital Signs requesting a sign approval for the Webster Assembly of God located at 708 Hard Road. As presented with the exception, they're going to add the street numbers to there to the front of the sign.
Is that be a motion, you decide?
Second.
A motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Good luck, I guess, thank you.
Yep, we'll see.
Accessory apartment waiver located at 943 Copper Tonne Road. Applicant Thaddeus Okolowits III is requesting an accessory apartment waiver approval along with a public hearing associated with the construction of a 420 square foot addition and use of a 574 square foot of space from existing residents to create a 994 square foot accessory apartment on a 0.35 acre parcel located in an R3 single-family residential district under sections 350-12 and 350-50 of the code of the town of Webster.
Yes, sir. Hi, we're requesting the... Please begin. Just give us your name and address, just for the record.
Ted Okolowits III, 943 Copper Tonne Road, Webster.
So why are you putting this in the lot apartment yet or something? Do you want to add errors or something?
There's 600 square foot approximately already there that was in addition. And then we're going to add to that another 400 square foot approximately, which is at 994, I guess it is.
I was looking at it. The only thing I'm sure it's okay, where is the entrance for this? Is that the coming off of the porch?
Yes.
So that's your entrance going into the apartment section, okay?
Correct.
Okay, I see it now, yeah. And that's... The new section would be just called space underneath?
Yes.
Okay. And there's no... In your paper, there's nothing at the front, no front doors or anything like that going out to address this particular unit?
No.
There's no changes in the front?
Right, for the front, you probably wouldn't be able to notice anything. It's just going to be in the back of the residence. It's just going to go out straight out, basically. For the added square foot.
Okay.
There is an interior door between the existing...
What's that? I didn't hear it.
I'm looking at the plan, it looks like there's just... There is an interior door between the in-law apartment and the...
Yeah, that would be his... That would be his code, yeah.
Yes.
So you got access to the porch and then access to the...
Yep. I see no issues with it. Anybody? You okay with it? Is it okay? Dave, you all right? Is this... It says here because it's larger than 700. It's a little waver because it's an addition to the addition that was already existing, so... Okay, all right. Is this that one of your parents, I'm assuming?
Yes, this is my mother.
Oh, you're moving in? Oh, nice, good luck. That's good, I like that.
I'm looking forward to it.
I think that's great, all that stuff like this. I hope someday my kids do it with me. Wait a minute. Can you withdraw your application? Okay, enough, we're... All right, everybody's all right with this? Do you want to go sit around?
The town of Webster planning board can serve the request by applicant Thaddeus Okolowits III to construct a 420 square foot addition and use 574 square feet of space in the existing residence to create the 994 square foot accessory apartment on a 0.35 acre parcel having a SBL number 064.19-1-29 located at 943 Copper Tonne Drive in an R3 single-family residential district. The planning board classifies the proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617C9 that states environmental law of law review regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Okay, that be a motion, you decide?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. For the approval, Josh, you're okay with everything at this?
Yes. The only thing that will be required is an accessory apartment agreement.
I'm sorry?
Once it's built, we'll just need the applicants to sign off on an accessory apartment agreement.
For the county?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right. I can make a motion for the approval. Let's see. The... Read this whole thing. Part of the code was conform with chapter 225 in the code regarding accessory apartments. Accessory apartments should be limited to a maximum of 55%. I don't want to read all that, it's unnecessary. Why don't we just say that we accept it and then it meets... It meets... The application is meeting the requirements of 225. The zoning 225491, the code of the town of Webster.
So, Tony, just to let you know, the ordinance number changed.
Oh, it did?
Yeah.
That's interesting.
It's section 350-50.
All right. Okay. And significant construction within a year on the project. Anything else you think should be in? Okay, with that, all right, that be a motion, you decide.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And aye, you're good. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Last item on tonight's agenda, Waterview Apartments Phase 3 located at Willow Point's corner of Willow Point Way and Donner Mall Drive. Applicant Legacy Development Company Incorporated is requesting sketch plan review associated with the proposed construction of two three-story, 45-unit apartment buildings on a 13.52 acre parcel located in a medium-high residential district under section 35014 of the code of the town of Webster.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you very much for your time and hearing this. My name is Chris Nadler, the general counsel for Mark IV Enterprises. I'm here tonight with Chris DiMarzo, the president and owner of Mark IV, and David Cox from Paso, Pasero, our design engineer. As many of you may remember, this project was approved in the 1980s for an eight-story, 150-unit mid-rise apartment building. We've come back multiple times since then, most recently in 2017 for a scaled-down, five-story apartment building. At that time, we submitted a traffic study that showed that the proposed development would not have a noticeable impact at McEwen and Bay and would not have a noticeable impact at Willow Point and Bay. We submitted a line of site study in 2017 showing that no cues would be impacted with a five-story building, as well as many other environmental reports. I'm sure the town has those on files and will be updating as needed. We've met with the town supervisor and the town planner and are here today to present a much reduced, a significantly reduced project. Two three-story buildings with 90 apartment units. We're proposing to create a 13-acre parcel on which the two 45-unit buildings would be located. That's 6.8 units per acre, which is allowed by the MHR zoning code. Primary access will be onto the Q and Drive. David Cox from Pasero is here to present the technical details and then we can both answer any questions and get the board's feedback and any suggestions.
Good evening, Waterowners, I'm David Cox with Pasero Associates. Just to provide a little bit more information. So as Chris mentioned, that original plan was for a bunch of townhouses in the front of the property and then that large, you know, eight-story building or seven-story building in the back here. So that was always part of the overall plan development for this project. So it was to be broken up in phases. This last piece in the back was phase four, that was the last phase. And that's what we're here for, is to complete that last phase. So from the beginning, it was always contemplated to have a larger building back here. This plan actually spelled out 158 units in this big building in the back here. And as you know, on the... Here are a photo, you can see all the townhouses have already been developed and that last piece is what is still being... Is still vacant. And that's where we've, you know, instead of having one large building, 158 units, now it's just two buildings with 45 units each for a total of 90 units. So a definite decrease and also just three stories. So bringing it down from seven, eight stories down to three stories and 158 units down to 90 units. So quite a drastic change there. And then also, I... Some other projects in Webster that I personally have designed over my years, I just wanted to take a look at those and see. And they're actually somewhat similar. So this is Picture Parkway. This is off of... Um, so this is Picture Parkway, uh, this is off of Hard Road here, where there's a bunch of fourplexes surrounded by a large building. This building is 72 units, so very similar, uh, project is one we have, where, you know, have smaller, smaller buildings in a larger building out front. We have, uh, Winding Creek Woods, um, where we have very similar, we have a bunch of townhomes down here, and then we have a grouping of a more larger buildings. Um, so these are five buildings, and there's 130 units on this area, in a pretty dense area, pretty small area, uh, we got 130 units grouped there, so similar. And then, uh, Webster Green, or behind the Brewsters, uh, we have, once again, we have townhomes, and then two larger buildings in the back here. Um, each of these were approved for 60 units each, so 120 units right here in this, um, tight little area, and this actually got approved at 12 units per acre. Um, so that's almost double, uh, what we have at 6.8 units per acre. So, um, just, you know, just on these projects, I personally have designed, you know, a very similar style of, you know, some smaller townhomes or buildings like that in one or two with, you know, five, uh, larger, more dense units, so. So a little, uh, blow-up area here, uh, we have McEwen Drive to the north here, so there's already an existing access point off of McEwen, which we will, we will, uh, be utilizing for our access, comes into the property. Um, and we have Maritime Drive is the one that ties into McEwen, so we're going to tie into that for the, for the first building. Uh, we have parking on two sides, uh, these buildings do have garages, they have 10 garages, um, so they have five on each side, so there is some garage space, uh, for these units, which is a very nice amenity. Uh, these are, you know, higher-end market-rate apartments. Uh, and then the, the other building, the lower building, will come off of Willow Point Way, have an access there, um, providing parking on two sides again, same thing with those garages. So, um, yeah, and we're at about a 1.6 parking spaces per unit. I will point out that the original, um, design up here, uh, had planned for 1.5, uh, spaces per unit, so that's very much in keeping what, uh, what we have proposed here. And then as far as, just kind of an elevation view, here's a, you know, rendering of what the, uh, you know, conceptually what the buildings will look like. Uh, so a nice, you know, modern-style-looking building, uh, we do have a flat roof, um, so that'll actually be a very similar height to a two-story, single-family house with a pitch roof, or a two-story townhome with a pitch roof. Um, so really, uh, similar height in keeping with the surrounding buildings in the neighborhood, uh, as well as, you know, fits in with code. So code is an act of three, uh, three stories, so, uh, we are within code for that, so no issues there. Um, and really, tonight, we are at the conceptual sketch plan, uh, so we really wanted to get feedback from the town, that's why we're here, you know, to see if we need to make any modifications, changes, um, and really, really are looking for the board's input on this. But this is a, a great project, um, there's definitely a need for a diversity of, of housing stock, you know, Webster's a growing, a growing area, a great place to live. I moved here in 2015 because it's just a, it's where life is worth living, it's really a great town, a lot of, a lot of trees and the bay, the lake, there's just, uh, Webster has a lot to offer, and I think a lot of people are knowing, know that, and, uh, if they'd like to move here, so. Um, yeah, and by that, we can take any questions you might have.
Okay, thanks, David. Uh, anybody, any questions?
How many bedrooms are these units on here?
How many variances?
Bedroom, bedrooms.
Bedrooms.
It'll be a mix of one, two, and possibly a few threes, three-unit, or three-bedroom units.
Because with 1. whatever car space is per unit there, if you have a three-bedroom one, and you have a couple living in there with their, with their kids, they could be four cars, or they could possibly have four cars?
Uh, that, that is possible, we actually regulate that through the terms at our lease, we're not going to allow, uh, a, a couple to let their adult children with vehicles live there without, they would have to get a separate unit. Then we regulate that to our lease. Interestingly, we did a, a parking analysis of our properties, there's, uh, 2,000 units throughout, throughout the county, um, and what we need for our tenants and their guests and their service providers, about 1.2 unit, uh, spaces per unit. And, and this project was like 1.5.
1.6.
1.6.
So it's a, it's a high, a high ratio of one bedroom apartment?
The color sketch of the apartments that you're finding, those are the colors you're going to use? The black and the orange, or, excuse me, the orange? Referring to this.
Yeah, I think those are, some of that is wood, uh, wood, wood, uh, feature, not orange.
I think by the time this project gets established, it'll be a little bit different from this.
Yeah. I think that's a good thought.
So let's leave it at that. To me, the biggest issue with this is going to be the variances here, we have some variances on this. That one, that one apartment, what is that, about eight foot or something, 16 foot from the property line? That, that's going to be the issue, that's going to be an issue. You know, we, we met last week, discussing a little bit controversial going on about the number here is four acres, and you're combining the two parcels going out. And I was, wasn't positive on how that worked in a situation like this, we do a little research on it, and actually, you're correct. I'm saying that, yeah, because looking up, the town engineer in the past has looked at sites like this in more situations, and has agreed that we use the entire parcel, even though it's not usable. It's wetlands, e-pod, this, that, and the other, we're still considering. Is there a written policy there? Is there, I don't know if there's a policy, but that's what the town accepted out of the project.
I realize that's what they've accepted.
I've looked, and the town board never changed it.
Yeah, but I know the actual wording, little it says maximum of five units per. It doesn't, it doesn't say average, it says maximum.
Per acre, so you're 16, how many acres is 17?
They have acres per acre, so that's, that's greater than five.
There's 13, we have 13 and a half acres?
We have 13.1 acres.
But the code specifically says maximum of five units per acre.
It's eight, eight units per acre.
Which is what you have, which is, which is greater than five, the code says eight, it says five.
No, it says eight. Be sure it says eight. Either way, one of the, one of the nice things about this is that the development is focused up at the top of the hill, completely away from the environmentally sensitive areas.
So that's different. But that's how it is, and I looked at it earlier, personally, I don't know why, because we don't have a print book anymore.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But if you're specifically adding, you had exact number?
We're, we're, well, we're at 6.8, we're allowed an eight.
Right, but what you're doing is you're averaging it over the entire parcel. And so my question is, so this thing says eight per acre, the way I read that one says eight per acre. That's the use of your data.
13.1 acres.
Right, but you're, you're doing an average of 13 acres.
Yeah, and that's, that's.
You have a parcel. But it says maximum per acre, eight per acre.
Okay, so it's a total of 13, 15, 16?
Yeah, but it's not 13 acres. You can't, you're looking at, the way it's written, it says eight per acre, it's not an average of eight per acre, it says a maximum per acre. What you're doing is an average of eight per acre, you're taking the entire 13 acres and you're saying, maybe you can, or four acres, nine acres, or units, I can put in more, or whatever. But that's actually the average of the entire acreage of the town. The code is written, it says eight, so what I'm asking is even though the town has done this before, is there any kind of written policy that says that we had administratively determined? That when it says maximum, do we actually mean average? And I haven't seen any things that supports that.
Um, I will tell you that, uh, there's New York State case law that defines it per parcel, essentially, I guess what you're defining as, as an average. Uh, but I think, I'm sure that, uh, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Jesse and I can look that out.
Yeah, we'll need to see something that supports that, but, I mean, I understand that it has been allowed in the past, and they have had higher densities in other areas, but with the way the wording actually is, it says a specific number per acre. What you're giving is an average of the entire parcel. And then the other question I had in relation to that is that the back portion of the parcel, you know, this original development, and by the way, I have never seen any previous proof of it, I don't know if I've posted any. I've never seen any of the previous proof of it, like five, eight, or whatever. This project is from 1988, things have changed significantly in environmental matters. You have environmental protection overlay districts that cover hundreds of those different person, you have a forested protection area, that's also covered, also protected. There are also still even, you are in now the waterfront, like the OWRP, which is also a new, so you have a whole new set of environmental regulations, it's active, it's right, it's, so another discussion is, is there all this area in the back? That they're claiming that you can do an average of development, it's really not developed, so does that really count towards the total?
Town engineer said an issue was discussed at a conceptual stage noting, town has to look at the entire site in the MHR zoning district. It is not like illuminating wetlands, steep slopes, as far as the state will show density. So that comes, so.
I don't know what that's.
What's that?
What's that?
No, some minutes for, for another.
Okay, I, I don't know, I don't know the context, but.
This is, so this is what, this is saying that.
So from this board right now, for the application that is in front, it seems to me that we have to take into consideration that there is a huge portion of the parcel. You really only got about three acres of this, and it's not in this area that's now protected, there is overlay districts. Within the land, the town is giving accounting for those overlay districts.
Yeah, this was, you know, this is.
San Luis overlay districts really be counted towards non-developable land?
This is a question you actually brought this up, I'm just looking at it here. Mr. Anderson raised a question about the density of the development.
I've always questioned it, I've never really gotten an answer, mainly because we were never given the title of approval plans for pages one, two, and three. We have never seen any of those sets, even though I have like requested that it work, we have not received any of those sets. So we don't have anything going.
Derek, you're looking to be like, I failed to get.
No, I'm just letting you know, because you're the applicant.
I don't have the stuff from 1985 anymore.
Right, you have the one plan, it's very interesting, because we've never seen that before. The other thing I do notice, because I have driven in the area to look at it, is that it looks very much like you have this parking lot for, uh, the eastern unit, right in the middle of the stormwater detention ground, for the rest of the city. There's an outlet structure there, and there's cattails, and that doesn't show up in the plans, I suppose. That's another change that's happened since 1988, is all the stormwater protection. If you remember back then, that stuff was a really good place.
Yeah, why don't we do, why don't we do this then? Derek, why don't we do this, why don't, you got some good points, and I think maybe the thing to do is maybe why don't you outline them, take them into consideration at this point, and then we can address these things. Because there are some unknowns here, we'll just move over to what?
Well, I think as a board, we have to have an understanding and discussion amongst ourselves too, how we have these areas that have unidentified places that should be protected, how as a board are we going to have interpretation work?
Well, the areas to be protected are, there certainly are, this, this here piece is the upper, upper flat, flat toe of the whole overall parcel, which goes all the way down to the R and quite big.
Sure.
And that's, that's an e-pod, wetland, and everything else, and that's all protected area.
Right.
So there's nothing going in that area.
Right, but what we're doing is claiming acres to apply towards tolling.
Towards that, no, I understand.
So the ultimate question is, is that legitimate?
Well, based.
It don't fit some other.
Based, based on past, in, based on past, in the MHR, this is, we have accepted it, so that's why I'm, that's where I'm going with this. So, but, unless it might, I don't know.
But you've never had this type of environmental overlay.
Correct, so that's why I'm saying.
So this is the meat, so this is something.
Why don't we, why don't we let them check into that and work with a solution in that? Is that be the answer?
Yeah, Derek, your point is you just go in, yeah, and certainly, the applicants come to themselves to pick up that conversation and make a resolution.
Yeah, but, all right, um, I know there's some neighbors here, I'm assuming there are neighbors in the project, this isn't a public hearing?
There is one other point.
Go ahead, let's do it, go ahead.
In the presentation you referenced the traffic study that was done on previous 2017, that traffic study showed that the intersection fails, and at that time, the argument was made that it fails, so therefore we can put whatever remark because it's failed anyway.
That's characterizing, uh, the traffic study and what we said about it, what the traffic study says is that, at, in 2017, I assume it's been, uh, Easton Lane failed on the intersection.
The intersection, Kevin, I was real, did not say women and parks. That, that was definitely taken with the traffic. Anyone, anyone that travels up and down May Road, tries to get in and out of the parkside, tries to do that, they know at this rate, because you can sit there for five or 10 minutes trying to get out there, before you get a prayer chance to go out. So that intersection just failed. You have to see some kind of.
Yeah, we'll have to take a look, we'll have to take a look at that. Right, we're going to write, now.
The invasion of traffic simply has failed, so therefore we may fail worse.
I think, I think ultimately, there's going to need to be, be a traffic study.
Yeah, we're going to have a traffic.
That many units and that much traffic, we think we're all in agreement to that.
Yep.
That would be down the road. Good points that you brought up, um, you know what, this isn't a public hearing, I just wanted to sort of record, so it's not open for public speaking. However, I know some people here, and we have interesting insight, if a few of you want to come up, maybe two or three people can come up, I just don't want to give repetition going, come up, just give us your name and address, and, and if you can help us out. Sure, go ahead.
Hi, Dave Dyer, I live at, uh, 400 McEwen Lane, so I'm a direct neighbor to the property. I'm very concerned about the, exactly what Mr. Anderson was talking about, which is grouping for, on convenience sake, grouping all the acreage together, but then not being able to utilize the acreage. And actually, that property with all the overlay zones, um, there's, uh, you know, a beaver pond at the bottom, there's the runoff that's going to come off of that, and I'm very concerned about shoehorning in the, uh, the property and the buildings, uh, into a much smaller area. And I know the planning board is really concerned about the aesthetics of the product, project, um, and I'm concerned that that will not reflect well on what we're trying to do in Webster, uh, because we are just jamming in as many units as possible. Uh, the last attempt that, um, that Legacy put in, uh, submitted was for 98 units, this, uh, this, uh, attempt is for 90 units. Uh, a lot of concern about parking, uh, the town code, as you know, is, is two units per, uh, plus an overflow parking, so 225 units of parking, uh, they're looking at 144 units of parking. I'm not sure where those other 81 people go, but I'm concerned it'll be by Mr. Johnson and my as a home, so. So I am concerned about the aesthetics and then of course, the, how many, how many units we're just trying to jam in this area. If we went with how, how big this, this area is at 3.76 acres, we really should be putting, looking at something like 30 units in there. And that should be the maximum.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Charlie Johnson. I'm at 440 McEwen, which is directly behind the properties. It's actually the last property before the, yeah, right, yeah, right, yeah, right there, right before the pumping station.
Okay.
So obviously, we're looking out directly at the back of the structure. Again, I'm not an expert at reading these, but in terms of the tree line itself, in terms of what they were taking down, what they were going to keep, that existing tree line stops, I think at the measurement they have for the property next door to mine, maybe you have to zoom in there. So obviously, what I'm talking about is what we're actually looking at, right? We also have children, right, two children that have to walk up McEwen Drive to Bay Road to take the bus every day, right? Just like Mr. Dyer indicated, just from pure volume standpoint, even try, now trying to make a left turn on the Bay Road going to work every morning is a challenge. I don't know what's going to happen with Willow Point, but if they're saying McEwen is the primary road they want to use, right, that has a very negative impact on quality of life, so, right? And the last part is, and I'm not sure how this works, but access to the interior parts of the building. If there's an issue in between those buildings, I don't know how emergency equipment gets in there.
And that's, that's.
I'm just looking at the way that structure, do they go through that little peak there, do they come back to McEwen? How would they access?
That would have to be, that would be controlled by the fire department, they'll.
Okay.
That part, sure.
And then my last question, it's more of a zoning or variance issue. We don't have a measurement from our property to the back of the building, so I don't know if that's 100 feet or if it's the property line or if it's the actual dwelling itself, that's 100 feet, or that's a difference. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
All right, anybody have a word? Best way to handle this is to review some of these questions that were brought up, address. We've done this in the past. I don't know if we will be long in doing it, I don't know. By including those parcels into the overall equation and then using part of it. I know like in a cluster development, you don't, you don't add that land in, but my understanding in an MHR, you do add it in. I don't know if I'm right or wrong, that's my understanding of what we've done.
I'll tell you, having reviewed the code entirely after our meeting, because it came to surprise me, it's in compliance with code, you use the entire 13.1 acres. It's what your code says, you can't read anything else, developable acres, you can't read in, you know, the stuff we want to be developed or not want to be developed. It's just what the code says, and the way you've been doing it apparently is the right way, it's what your code says, and that's all you do. That's all you're allowed to follow, no matter what you want.
And I can say from the three projects that I previously did, none of the wetland areas, they, all three of them had wetland areas. The wetland areas were not taken out of that calculation.
Did, did that take, like in this case, the MHR?
Correct. Yep, they were all, all three were in the MHR.
Well, again, I'm reading, this was one of the comments was from the town engineer at the time stating that, that's what we placed our information at. But let's get it clarified 100%. You can talk to our town attorney, see if you can get some documentation on this. Another thing I'd like to, before I forget, and it's coming off of Willow Point Way, I know there was an issue with, you know, there was, we had an issue going with people in there or something, a lawsuit or something, whether they could use it or not. I know, it can't, it can't be blocked, that's all, that was the last I ever stood.
Okay, the town has ordered that it not be blocked.
Yeah.
You know, we have access to a public road that is sufficient, we'll show that with an updated traffic report.
Okay, that, that would, that, I think those are the little things that we need to.
So they were given permission to cross private.
Excuse me?
And, and thinking back to the town, because when those, the biggest argument that people in Willow Point had was that this is our private property and that you're proposing a development, and those two are, are mine. And again, this is something the last time I was here was how it was told themselves, so I guess I'm curious, would we buy some kind of agreement, lawsuit, court order, given permission to go through Willow Point?
What I said was, we have access to a public road in McEwen that is sufficient to handle all of the traffic from this.
Right, what about limiting access to going through Willow Point?
That's not very.
They clearly didn't want it, okay.
Okay.
Your second building exclusively goes on Willow Point Way, I can see.
We own Willow Point Way at that point.
So that parcel back in the 80s, when this was originally approved, the entrances were off of Willow Point, they had them, but also McEwen, but.
Absolutely.
Right?
That's exactly correct.
All right, so if you can get us some documentation, just showing that, just to.
Sure, you can absolutely do that.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I see that, I see what you've got there, but I think probably you should do something in a letter form.
Okay.
So check this out.
Well, thank you very much.
Anything else?
Tony?
Yes?
I just, just want to confirm that you're looking for planning board members and any other staff in the town to provide any follow-up comments or concerns, so that the applicant can address them?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're, we're clear with that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm sure engineering is going to have some, you know, something. Is there a PRC meeting this week?
There is.
So more than likely, this would be part of it?
Yes.
Okay, so then there would be some.
So there'll be further comments coming to you.
Exactly.
That more than what was already discussed now, I just wanted to make sure that we had, that those comments would be coming to you so you can address them either in the drawing and as well written.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
What else, let's see, you, you scheduled for the zoning board?
Well, I'm for the zoning board next week.
Next week or something? Okay. All right, well, I guess that's all we can really do tonight. I think we've got a starter in direction.
Absolutely.
I think, I think you just have to verify it, that's all.
I think there's a lot, you know, of information that our full set of site plans will tell this board that will alleviate a lot of concerns, you know, an updated traffic report, I think that will alleviate a lot of concerns and, you know, we'll go from there.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much for your advice.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, thanks for coming in, folks. Now, this, when they come in, ultimately, the way this process is going, they'll be back in again. And then the next stage will be around just to review like this. Ultimately, then there's a preliminary hearing for it, and that's, so that, in the way it gets to that stage, that's a public hearing. That's when you get off the street and saw it, okay? Then we'll all know if we put more of it's going out.
How do they get to mine? So how, how do you go about combining the parcels?
Oh, there's, there's just, there's two separate pieces.
But the entire project is in one, why do you, how can they?
Well, you can do that, but.
So you could just do that?
Yeah, I don't think we can do that.
No, this has to. Can you divide as well?
How, how's it, the two last people joined together? Okay, all right, well, thank you very much for coming in, I guess that's all for you.
Is there any other kind of, like, Derek, how does, I'll go and carry that. Everybody has some, you know, projects back.
Oh, yeah, no, it's all.
To Derek's point, I feel completely.